Last time I lost power and I don't remember. Exactly where I was at, but. Oh, there we go. I'm gonna start from non-Euclidean TNT. Oops. We are now faced with a similar situation involving TNT. We have adopted a notation which prejudices us in certain ways. For instance, usage of the symbol plus tends to make us think that every theorem with a plus sign in it ought to say something known and familiar and sensible about the known and familiar operation we call addition. Therefore, it would run against the grain to propose adding the following sixth axiom. It doesn't jibe with what we believe about addition, but it is one plausible extension of TNT. As we have so far formulated TNT, the system which uses this as its sixth axiom is a consistent system. In the sense of not having two theorems of the form X and tilde X. However, when you juxtapose this sixth axiom with the pyramidal family of theorems shown above, you will probably be bothered by a seeming inconsistency between the family and the new axiom. But this kind of inconsistency is not so damaging as the other kind where X and tilde X are both theorems. In fact, it is not a true consistent inconsistency because there is a way of interpreting the symbols so that everything comes out all right. Oh yeah, this is where I was, this is where I was at last time. I forgot what that character was again. Oh. Why does it change? That's weird. W or whatever, I mean. Hang on. Man. What did it first? Bring that up. It's been too long since I was reading this. Yeah, you're right, the timer. Yeah, no. Alright, uh. Dude, what is this symbol called? I think it's used for, um. Phonetic. Stuff, but. It's not psi, is it? Omega. Right, it's omega. Okay. It's just the lowercase of omega. Okay. Omega inconsistency is not the same as inconsistency. This kind of inconsistency created by the opposition of one, a pyramidal family of theorems which collectively assert that all natural numbers have some property, and two, a single theorem. Uh, which seems to assert that not all numbers have it, is given this name of omega inconsistency. An omega inconsistent system is more like the, at the outset, distasteful but in the end acceptable, non-Euclidean geometry. In order to form a mental model of what is going on, you have to imagine that there are some extra unsuspected numbers. Let us not call them natural, but supernatural numbers, which have no numerals. Therefore, facts about them cannot be represented in the pyramidal family. This is a little bit like Achilles' conception of God as a sort of supergen, a being greater than any of the gens. This was scoffed at by the genie. But it is a reasonable image and may help you to imagine supernatural numbers. What this tells us is that the axioms and rules of TNT, as so far presented, do not fully pin down the interpretations for the symbols of TNT. There is still room for variation in one's mental model of the notions they stand for. Each of the various possible extensions would pin down some of the notions further, but in different ways. Which symbols would begin to take on distasteful passive meanings if we added the sixth axiom given above? Would all of the symbols become tainted or would some of them still mean what we want them to mean? I will let you think about that. We will encounter a similar question in chapter fourteen and discuss the matter then. In any case, we will not follow this extension now, but instead go on to try to repair the omega incompleteness of TNT. The last rule. The problem with the rule of all was that it required knowing that all deadlines of an infinite pyramidal family are theorems, too much for a finite being. But suppose that each line of the pyramid can be derived from its predecessor in a patterned way. Then there would be a finite reason for accounting for the fact that all the strings in the pyramid are theorems. The trick then is to find the pattern that causes the cascade and show that that pattern is a theorem in itself. That is like proving that each gen passes a message to its meta, as in the children's game of telephone. The other thing to show is that genie starts the cascading message, that is, to establish that the first line of the pyramid is a theorem. Then you know that God will get the message. In the, in the particular pyramid we are looking at, there is a pattern captured by lines four through nine of the derivation below. Push premise, add S, carry over line three, transitivity, pop. The premise is print, in parentheses. Capital O plus B equals B. I can't, or, I kind of forgot, like, some of this system, so I'm probably not even, I'm just gonna skip over it. And hopefully it ends soon. The first line of the pyramid is also a theorem. It follows directly from axiom two. All we need now is a rule that lets us deduce that the string which summarizes the entire pyramid is itself a theorem. Such a rule will be formalized, will be a formalized statement of the fifth piano postulate. To express that rule, we need a little notation. Let us abbreviate a well-formed formula in which the variable A is free by the following notation. There may be other free variables too, but that is irrelevant. Then the notation will stand for that string, but with every occurrence of A replaced by SA. Likewise, X curly brackets, it's O over A would stand for the same string with each appearance of A replaced by zero. I just say zero, yeah, I guess it's zero. A specific example would be to let X curly brackets A stand for the string in question. And then. Gosh dang it, I'm literally skipping, I'm skipping these pages. Not. The other requirement is the first line of the pyramid. Okay, um. Tension and resolution in TNT. TNT has proven the commutativity of addition, even if you do not follow this derivation in detail. It is important to realize that like a piece of music, it has its own natural rhythm. It is not just a random walk that happens to have landed on the desired last line. I've inserted breathing marks to show some of the phrasing of this derivation. Line twenty-eight in particular is a turning point in the derivation, something like the halfway point in an AABB type of piece, where you resolve momentarily, even if not in the tonic key. Such important intermediate stages are often called lemes. It is easy to imagine a reader starting at line one of this derivation, ignorant of where it is to end up, and getting a sense of where it is going as he sees each new line. This would set up an inner tension, much like the tension in a piece of music caused by chord progressions that let you know what a tonality is, without resolving. Arrival at line twenty-eight would confirm the reader's intuition and give him a momentary feeling of satisfaction, while at the same time strengthening his drive to progress towards what he presumes is the true goal. Now line forty-nine is a critically important tension increaser, because of the almost-there feeling which it induces. It would be extremely unsatisfactory to leave off there. From there on, it is almost predictable how things must go, but you wouldn't want a piece of music to quit on you just when it had made the mode of resolution apparent. You don't want to imagine the ending, you want to hear the ending. Likewise here, we have to carry things through. Line fifty-five is inevitable and it sets up all the final tensions which are resolved by line fifty-six. This is typical of the structure not only of formal derivations, but also of informal proofs. The mathematician's sense of tension is intimately related to his sense of beauty, and is what makes mathematics worthwhile doing. Notice however that in TNT itself, there seems to be no reflection of these tensions. In other words, TNT doesn't formalize the notions of tension and resolution, goal and sub-goal, naturalness and inevitability. Any more than a piece of music is a book about harmony and rhythm. Could one devise a much fancier typographical system which is aware of the tensions and goals inside derivations? Formal reasoning versus informal reasoning. I would have preferred to show how to derive Euclid's theorem, the infinitude of primes, in TNT, but it would probably have doubled the length of the book. Now after this theorem, the natural direction to go would be to prove the associativity of addition, the commutativity and associativity of multiplication, and the distribut- and the distributivity of multiplication over addition. These would give a powerful base to work from. As it is now formulated, TNT has reached critical mass, perhaps a strange metaphor to apply to something called TNT. It is of the same strength as the system of Principa Mathematica. In TNT, one can now prove every theorem which you would find in a standard treatise on number theory. Of course, no one would claim that deriving theorems in TNT is the best way to do number theory. Anybody who felt that way would fall in the same class of people as those who think that the best way to know what one thousand times one thousand is, is to draw a one thousand by one thousand grid and count all the squares in it. No, after total formalization, the only way to go is towards relaxation of the formal system. Otherwise, it is so enormously unwieldy as to be, for all practical purposes, useless. Thus, it is important to embed TNT within a wider context, a context which enables new rules of inference to be derived, so that derivations can be speeded up. This would require formalization of the language in which rules of inference are expressed, that is, the meta-language. And one could go considerably further. However, none of these speeding up tricks would make TNT any more powerful. They would simply make it more usable. The simply fa- the simple fact is that we have put into TNT every mode of thought that number theorists rely on. Embedding in it, embedding it in ever larger contexts will not enlarge the space of theorems. It will just make working in TNT or in each new improved version look more like doing conventional number theory. Number theorists go out of business. I suppose that you didn't have advanced knowledge that TNT will turn out to be incomplete, but rather expected that it is complete. That is, that every true statement expressible in the TNT notation is a theorem. In that case, you can make a decision procedure for all of number theory. The method would be easy. If you want to know if in-statement X is true or false, code it into TNT sentence X. Now if X is true, completeness says that X is a theorem, and conversely, if not, X is true. Or if not X is true, then completeness says that tilde X is a theorem. So either X or tilde X must be a theorem, since either X or not X is true. Now begin systematically enumerating all the theorems of TNT, and the way we did for the MU system and the PQ system. You must come to X or tilde X after a while, and whichever one you hit tells you which of X and not X is true. Did you follow this argument? It crucially depends on your being able to hold separate in your mind the formal system TNT and its informal counterpart in. Make sure you understand it. Thus, in principle, if TNT were complete, number theorists would be put out of business, any quest- uh, would be put out of business. Any question in their field could be resolved, with sufficient time in a purely mechanical way. As it turns out, this is impossible, which depending on your point of view, is a cause either for rejoicing or for mourning. Hilbert's program. The final question we will take up in this chapter is whether we should have as much faith in the consistency of TNT as we did in the consistency of the propositional calculus. And if we don't, whether it is possible to increase our faith in TNT by proving it to be consistent. One could make the same opening statement on the obviousness of TNT's consistency as imprudence did in regard to the propositional calculus. Namely, that each rule embodies a reasoning principle which we fully believe in, and therefore to question the consistency of TNT is to question our own sanity. To some extent, this argument still carries weight, but not quite so much weight as before. There are just too many rules of inference, and some of them just might be slightly off. Furthermore, how do we know that this mental model we have of some abstract entities called natural numbers is actually a coherent construct? Perhaps our own thought processes, those informal processes which we have tried to capture in the formal rules of the system, are themselves inconsistent. It is of course not the kind of thing we expect, but it gets more and more conceivable that our thoughts might lead us astray, the more complex the subject matter gets. And natural numbers are by no means a trivial subject matter. So prudence's cry for a proof of consistency has to be taken more seriously in this case. It's not that we seriously doubt that TNT could be inconsistent, but there is a little doubt, a flicker, a glimmer of a doubt in our minds, and a proof would help to dispel that doubt. But what means of proof would we like to be, would be, would we like to see used? Once again, we are faced with the recurrent question of circularity. If we use all the same equipment in a proof about our system as we have inserted into it, what will we have accomplished? If we could have managed to convince ourselves of the consistency of TNT, but by using a weaker system of reasoning than TNT, we will have beaten the circularity objection. Think of the way a heavy rope is passed between ships, or so I read when I was a kid. First, a light arrow is fired across the gap, pulling behind it a thin rope. Once a connection has been established between the two ships this way, then the heavy rope can be pulled across the gap. If we can use a light system to show that a heavy system is consistent, then we shall have really accomplished something. Now, on first sight, one might think there is a thin rope. Our goal is to prove that TNT has a certain typographical property, consistency, that no theorems of the form X and not X could ever, or ever occur. This is similar to trying to show that MU is not a theorem of the MU system. Both are statements about typographical properties of symbol manipulation systems. The visions of a thin rope are based on the presumption that facts about number theory won't be needed in proving that such a typographical property holds. In other words, if properties of integers are not used, or if only a few extremely simple ones are used, then we could achieve the goal of proving TNT consistent by using means which are weaker than its own internal modes of reasoning. This is the hope which was held by an important school of mathematicians and logicians in the early part of this century, led by David Hilbert. The goal was to prove the consistency of formalizations of number theory similar to TNT by employing a very restricted set of principles of reasoning called finitistic methods of reasoning. These would be the thin rope. Included among finitistic methods are all of propositional reasoning, as embodied in the propositional calculus, and additionally, some kinds of numerical reasoning. But Gödel's work showed that any effort to pull the heavy rope of TNT's consistency across the gap by using the thin rope of finitistic methods is doomed to failure. Gödel showed that in order to pull the heavy rope across the gap, you can't use a lighter rope, there just isn't a strong enough one. Less metaphorically, we can say, any system that is strong enough to prove TNT's consistency is at least as strong as TNT itself, and so circularity is inevitable. A MU offering. The tortoise and Achilles have just been to hear a lecture on the origins of the genetic code and are now drinking some tea at Achilles' home.
I have something terrible to confess, Mr. T.
What is it, Achilles?
Despite the fascinating subject matter of that lecture, I drifted off to sleep a time or two. But in my drowsy state, I still was semi-aware of the words coming into my ears. One strange image that floated from my lower levels was that A and T, instead of standing for adenine and thymine, stood for my name and yours, and that double strands of DNA had tiny copies of me and you along their backbones, always paired up, just as adenine and thymine are, always are. Isn't that a strange symbolic image?
Fooey. Who believes in that silly kind of stuff? Anyway, what about C and G?
Well, I suppose C could stand for Mr. Krab, instead of first sight of sign.
I'm not sure about G, but I'm sure one could think of something.
Anyway, it was amusing to imagine my DNA being filled with minuscule copies of you, as well as tiny copies of myself, for that matter. Just think of the infinite regress that leads to.
I can see you are not paying too much attention to the lecture.
No, you're wrong. I was doing my best, only I had a hard time keeping fancy separated from fact. After all, it is such a strange another world that those molecular biologists are exploring.
How do you mean?
Molecular biology is filled with peculiar convoluted loops which I can't quite understand, such as the way that folded proteins, which are coded for in DNA, can loop back and manipulate the DNA which they came from, possibly even destroying it. Such strange loops always confuse the daylights out of me. They're eerie in a way.
I find them quite appealing.
You would, of course. They're just down your alley, for, but as for me, sometimes I like to retreat from all this analytical thought and just meditate a little, as an antidote. It clears my mind of all those confusing loops and incredible complexities which we were hearing about tonight.
Fancy that. I wouldn't have guessed that you were a med- a meditator.
Did I never tell you that I am studying Zen Buddhism?
Heavens, how did you come upon that?
I have always had as a yin, a yin for the yin and yang, you know, the whole Oriental mysticism trip with the I Ching gurus and whatnot. So one day I'm thinking to myself, why not Zen too? And that's how it all began.
Oh, splendid. Then perhaps I can finally become enlightened.
Whoa now, enlightenment is not the first step on the road to Zen. If anything, it's the last one. Enlightenment is not for novices like you, Mr. T.
I see we have had a misunderstanding. By enlightenment, I hardly meant something so witty as it is meant in Zen. All I meant is that I can perhaps become enlightened as to what Zen is all about.
For Pete's sake, why didn't you say so?
Well, I'd be only too happy to tell you what I know of Zen. Perhaps you might even be tempted to become a student of it, like me.
Well, nothing is impossible. You could study with me under my master, Okani Sama, the seventh patriarch.
Now what in the world does that mean?
You have to know the history of Zen to understand that.
Would you tell me a little of the history of Zen then?
An excellent idea. Zen is a kind of Buddhism which was founded by a monk named Bodhidharma, Bodhidharma. Uh, who left India and went to China around the sixth century. Bodhidharma was the first patriarch, the sixth one was Zeno.
I finally got it straight now.
The sixth patriarch was Zeno, eh? I find it strange that he, of all people, would get mixed up in this business.
I dare say you underestimate the value of Zen.
Just think about, uh, just think, listen just a little more, and maybe you'll come to appreciate it. As I was saying, about five hundred years later, Zen was brought to Japan, and it took hold very well there. Since that time, it has been one of the principal religions in Japan.
Who is this Okani Sama, the seventh patriarch?
He is my master, and his teachings descend directly from those of the sixth patriarch. He has taught me that reality is one, immutable, and unchanging. All plurality, change, and motion are mere illusions of the senses.
Sure enough, that's Zeno on my ill away. However, did he come to be tangled up with Zen, poor fellow?
What? I wouldn't put it that way. If anyone is tangled up, it's... But that's another matter. Anyway, I don't know what the answer, I don't know the answer to your question. Instead, let me tell you something of the teachings of my master. I have learned that in Zen, one seeks enlightenment, or satori, the state of no mind. In this state, one does not think about the world, one just is. I have also learned that a student of Zen is not supposed to attach to any object or thought or person, which is to say, he must not believe in or depend on any absolute, not even this philosoph- uh, philosophy of non-attachment.
Hmm, now there is something I could like about Zen.
I had a hunch you'd get attached to it.
But tell me, if Zen rejects intellectual activity, does it make sense to intellectualize about Zen, to study it rigorously?
That matter has troubled me quite a bit, but I think I have finally worked out an answer. It seems to me that you may begin approaching Zen through any path you know, even if it is completely antithetical to Zen. As you approach it, you gradually learn to stray from that path. The more you stray from the path, the closer you get to Zen.
Oh, it all begins to sound so clear now.
My favorite path to Zen is through the short, fascinating, and weird Zen parables called Koans.
What is a Cohen?
A Cohen is a story about Zen masters and their students. Sometimes it is like a riddle, other times like a fable, and other times like nothing you've ever heard before.
Sounds rather intriguing. Would you say that to read and enjoy Koans is to practice Zen?
I doubt it. However, in my opinion, a delight in Koans comes a million times closer to real Zen than reading volume after volume about Zen, written in heavy philosophical jargon.
I would like to hear a Cohen or two.
And I would like to tell you one or a few. Perhaps I should begin with the most famous one of all. Many centuries ago, there was a Zen master named Joshu, who lived to be one hundred nineteen years old.
A mere youngster?
By your standards, yes. Now, one day while Joshu and another monk were standing together in the monastery, a dog wondered why. The monk asked Joshu, does a dog have Buddha nature or not?
Whatever that is. So tell me, what did Joshu reply?
MU.
MU? What is this MU? What about the dog? What about Buddha nature? What's the answer?
Oh, but MU is Joshu's answer. By saying MU, Joshu let the other monk know that only by not asking such questions can one know the answer to them. Joshu unasked the question.
Exactly. MU sounds like a handy thing to have around. I'd like to unask a question or two sometimes. I guess I'm beginning to get the hang of Zen. Do you know any other Koans, Achilles? I would like to hear some more.
My pleasure. I can tell you a pair of Koans which go together, only...
What's the matter?
Well, there is one problem. Although both are widely told Koans, my master has cautioned me that only one of them is genuine. And what is more, he does not know which one is genuine and which one is a fraud.
Crazy. Why don't you tell them both to me and we can speculate to our hearts' content? Crazy. Why don't you tell them both to me and we can speculate to our hearts content?
Alright, one of the alleged Koans goes goes like this. A monk asked Basso, what is Buddha? Basso said, this mind is Buddha.
Hmm, this mind is Buddha? Sometimes I don't quite understand what these Zen people are getting at.
You might prefer the other alleged Cohen then.
How does it run?
Like this. A monk asked Basso, what is Buddha? Basso said, this mind is not Buddha.
My my, if my shell isn't green and not green.
I like that. Now Mister T, you're not supposed to just like Koans.
Very well, then I don't like it.
That's better. Now, as I was saying, my master believes only one of the two is genuine. I can't imagine what led him to such a belief. But anyway, I suppose it's all academic since there's no way to know if a Cohen is genuine or phony. Oh, but there you are mistaken. My master has shown us how to do it.
Is that so? A decision procedure for genuineness of Koans? I should very much like to hear about that.
It is a, it is a fairly complex ritual involving two stages. In the first stage, you must translate the Cohen in question into a piece of string folded all around in three dimensions.
That's a curious thing to do, and what is the second stage?
Oh, that's easy. All you need to do is determine whether the string has Buddha nature or not. If it does, then the Cohen is genuine. If not, the Cohen is a fraud.
Hmm, it sounds as if all you've done is transfer the need for a decision procedure to another domain. Now, it's a decision procedure for Buddha nature that you need. What next? After all, if you can't even tell whether a dog has Buddha nature or not, how can you expect to do so for every possible folded string?
Well, my master explained to me that shifting between domains can help. It's like switching your point of view. Sometimes things look complicated from one angle but simple from another. He gave the example of an orchard in which one, in which from one direction, no order is apparent. But from special angles, beautiful regularity emerges. You've reordered the same information by changing your way of looking at it.
I see. So perhaps the genuineness of a Cohen is concealed somehow very deep, very deeply inside it. But if you translate it into a string, it manages in some way to float to the surface?
That's what my master has discovered.
Then I would very much like to learn about the technique. But first, tell me. How can you turn a Cohen, a sequence of words, into a folded string, a three-dimensional object?
They are rather different kinds of entities. That is one of the most mysterious things I've learned in Zen. There are two steps, transcription and translation. Transcribing a Cohen involves writing it in a phonetic alphabet, which contains only four geometric symbols. This phonetic rendition of the Cohen is called the messenger.
What do the geometric symbols look like?
They are made of hexagons and pentagons. Here's what they. Look like. Picks up a nearby napkin and draws for the tortoise these four figures. They are mysterious looking, only to the, only to the uninitiated. Now, once you have made the messenger, you rub your hands in some ribo and.
Some ribo? Is that a kind of ritual anointment?
Not exactly. It is a special sticky preparation which makes the string hold its shape when folded up.
What is it made of?
I don't know exactly, but it feels sort of gluey and it works exceedingly well. Anyway, once you have some ribo on your hands, you can translate the sequence of symbols in the messenger into certain kinds of folds in the string. It's as simple as that.
Hold on, not so fast. How do you, how do you do that?
You begin with the string entirely straight. Then you go to one end and start making folds of various types according to the geometric symbols in the messenger.
So each of those geometric symbols stands for a different way to curl the string up?
Not in isolation. You take them three at a time instead of one at a time. You begin at one end of the string and one uh and one end of the messenger. What to do with the first inch of the string is determined by the first three geometric symbols. The first three symbols tell you how to fold the second inch of string. And so you inch your way along the string and simultaneously along the messenger. Folding each little segment of string until you have exhausted the messenger. If you have properly applied some ribo, the string will keep its folded shape. And what you thereby produce is this translation of a Cohen into a string. The procedure has a certain elegance to it. You must get some wild-looking strings that way.
That's for sure. The longer Koans translate into quite bizarre shapes. I can imagine. But in order to carry out the translation of the messenger into the string. You need to know what kind of fold each triplet of geometric symbols in the messenger stands for. How how do you know this? Do you have a dictionary?
Yes, there is a venerated book which lists the geometric code. If you don't have a copy of this book, of course, you can't translate a Cohen into a string.
Evidently not. What is the origin of the geometric code?
It came from an ancient master known as Great Tutor, whom whom my master says is the only one ever to attain the enlightenment, yond enlightenment.
Good gravy, as if one level of this stuff weren't enough. But then where, but then there are gluttons of every sort. Why not gluttons for enlightenment?
Do you suppose that enlightenment, yond enlightenment, stands for I? In my opinion, it's rather doubtful that it stands for you, Achilles. More likely, it stands for meta-enlightenment, me, that is.
For you?
Why would it stand for you? You haven't even reached the first stage of enlightenment, let alone the, you never know, Achilles. Perhaps those who have learned the lock, the low down on enlightenment return to this their state before enlightenment. I've always held that twice enlightened is unenlightened. But let's get back to the grand torch, I mean, the grand tutor. Little is known of him, except that he also invented the art of Zen strings. What is that? It is an art on which the decision procedure for Buddha nature is based. I shall tell you about it.
I would be fascinated. There is so much for novices like me to absorb.
There is even reputed to be a Cohen which tells about the art of Zen, uh which tells how the art of Zen strings began. But unfortunately, all this has long since been lost in the sands of time, and there is, and is no doubt gone forever. Which may be just as well, for otherwise there would be imitators who would take on the master's name and copy him in other ways.
But wouldn't it be a good thing if all students of Zen copied the most enlightened master of all, the great tutor?
Let me tell you a Cohen about an imitator. Zen master Gu Te raised his finger whenever he asked the question about Zen. A young novice began to imitate him in this way. When Gu Te was told about the novice's imitation, he sent for him and asked him if it were true. The novice admitted it was so. Gu Te asked him if he understood. In reply, the novice held up his index finger. Gu Te promptly cut it off. The novice ran from the room, howling in pain. As he reached the threshold, Gu Te called, boy. When the novice returned, Gu Te raised his index finger, and that instant, the novice was enlightened.
Well, what do you know? Just when I thought Zen was all about Joshu and his shenanigans. Now I find out that Gu Te isn't on the merriment too. He seems to have quite a sense of humor.
That Cohen is very serious. I don't know how you got the idea that it is humorous. Perhaps Zen is instructive because it is humorous. I would guess that if you took all such stories entirely. Seriously, you would miss the point as often as you would get it. Maybe there's something to your tortoise then.
Can you answer just one question for me? I would like to know this. Why did Bohadharma come from India into China?
Oh, shall I tell you what Joshu said when he was asked that very question? Please do. He replied, that oak tree in the garden.
Of course, that's just what I would have said. Except that I would have said it in an answer to a different question, namely, where can I find some shade from the midday sun?
Without knowing it, you have inadvertently hit upon one of the basic questions of all Zen. That question, innocent though it sounds, actually means, what is the basic principle of Zen?
How extraordinary. I hadn't the slightest idea that the central aim of Zen was to find some shade.
Oh no, you've misunderstood me entirely. I wasn't referring to that question. I meant your question about why Bohadharma came from India into China.
I see. Well, I had no idea that I was getting into such deep waters. But let's come back to this curious mapping. I gather that any Cohen can be turned into a folded string by following the method you outlined. Now, what about the reverse process? Can any folded string be read as in such a way as to yield a Cohen?
Well, in a way, however.
What's wrong?
You're just not supposed to do it that way round. It would violate the central dogma of Zen strings, you see, which is contained in this picture. Picks up a napkin and draws. Cohen, transcription to messenger, translation to folded string. You're not supposed to go against the arrows, especially not the second one.
Tell me, does this dogma have Buddha nature or not? Come to think of it, I think I'll unask the question. Is that alright?
I am glad you unasked the question, but I'll let you in on a secret. Promise you won't tell anyone? Tortoise's honor. Well, once in a while, I actually do go against the arrows. I get sort of an illicit thrill out of it, I guess. Why Achilles? I had no idea you would do something so irreverent. I've never confessed it to anyone before, not even Okani Sama.
So tell me, what happens when you go against the arrows in the central dogma? Does that mean you begin with a string and make a Cohen?
Sometimes, but we- some weirder things can happen.
Weirder than producing Koans?
Yes, when you untranslate and untranscribe, you get something, but not always a Cohen. Some strings, when read out loud this way, only give nonsense.
Isn't that just another name for Koans?
You clearly don't have the true spirit of Zen yet.
Do you always get stories at least?
Not always. Sometimes you get nonsense syllables, other times you get ungrammatical sentences. But once in a while, you get what seems to be a Cohen.
It only seems to be one?
Well, it might be fraudulent, you see.
Oh, of course. I call those strings which yield apparent Koans, well-formed strings. Why don't you tell me about the decision procedure which allows you to distinguish phony Koans from the genuine article?
That's what I was heading towards. Given the Cohen or non-Cohen, as the case may be. The first thing is to translate it into the three-dimensional string. All that's left is to find out if the string has Buddha nature or not.
But how do you do that?
Well, my master has said that the great du- the great tutor was able, by just glancing at a string, to tell if it had Buddha nature or not.
But what if you have not reached the stage of the enlightenment, yon enlightenment? Is there no other way to tell if a string has Buddha nature?
Yes, there is, and this is where the art of Zen strings comes in. It is a technique for making innumerably many strings, all of which have Buddha nature.
You don't say.
And is there a corresponding way of making strings which don't have Buddha nature?
Why would you want to do that?
Oh, I just thought it might be useful.
You have the strangest taste. Imagine being more interested in things that don't have Buddha nature than things that do.
Just chalk it up to my unenlightened state. But go on, tell me how to make strings, make a string which does have Buddha nature. Well, if you must begin, well, you must begin by draping a loop of string over your hands. In one of five legal starting positions, such as this one. Picks up a string and drapes it in a simple loop between a finger on each hand.
What are the other four legal starting positions?
Each one is a position considered to be self-evident manner. Uh to be a self-evident manner of picking up a string. Even novices often pick up strings in those positions, and these five strings all have Buddha nature.
Of course.
Then there are some string manipulation rules by which you can make more complex string figures. In particular, you are allowed to modify your string by doing certain basic motions of the hands. For instance, you can reach across like this and pull like this and twist like this. With each operation, you are changing the overall configuration of the shape of the string draped over your hands.
Why, it just, it looks just like making cats' cradles in such string figures.
That's right. Now, as you watch, you'll see that some of these rules make the string more complex, some simplify it. But whichever way you go, as long as you follow the string manipulation rules, every string you produce will have Buddha nature.
That is truly marvelous. Now, what about the Cohen concealed inside the string you've just made? Would it be genuine?
Why, according to what I've learned, it must. Since I made it according to the rules and began in one of the five self-evident positions, the string must have Buddha nature. And consequently, it must correspond to a genuine Cohen.
Do you know what the Cohen is?
Are you asking me to violate the central dogma, oh, you naughty fellow? And with furrowed brow and codebook in hand, Achilles points along the string inch by inch. Recording each fold by a triplet of geometric symbols of the strange phonetic alphabet for Koans, until he has nearly a napkin full.
Done. Terrific. Now let's hear it.
Alright. A traveling monk asked an old woman the road to Taizan, a popular temple supposed to give wisdom to the one who worships there. The old woman said, go straight ahead. After the monk had proceeded a few steps, she said to herself. He also is a common churchgoer. Someone told this incident to Joshu, who said, wait until I investigate. The next day, he went and asked the same question, and the old woman gave the same answer. Joshu remarked, I have investigated that old woman.
Why, with his flair for investigations, it's a shame that Joshu never was hired by the FBI. Now tell me, what you did, I could also do, if I followed the rules from the Zen, art of Zen strings, right?
Right.
Now would I have to perform the operations in just the same order as you did?
No, any old order will do.
Of course, then I would get a different string and consequently a different Cohen. Now, would I have to perform the same number of steps as you did?
By no means. Any number of steps is fine.
Well, then there are an infinite number of strings with Buddha nature, and consequently, an infinite number of genuine Koans. How do you know there is any string which can't be made by your rules?
Oh, yes, back to things which lack Buddha nature. It just so happens that once you know how to make strings with Buddha nature, you can also make strings without Buddha nature. That is something which my master drilled into me right at the beginning.
Wonderful, how does it work?
Easy, here, for example, I'll make a string which lacks Buddha nature. He picks up the string out of which the preceding Cohen was pulled. And ties a little teeny knot at one end of it, pulling it tight with his thumb and forefinger. This is it. No Buddha nature here.
Very illuminating. All it takes is adding a knot? How do you know that the new string lacks Buddha nature?
Because of this fundamental property of Buddha nature. When two well-formed strings are identical, but for a knot at the end. Then only one of them can have Buddha nature. It's a rule of thumb which my master taught me.
I'm just wondering about something. Are there some strings with Buddha nature which you can't reach by following the rules of Zen, of Zen strings, no matter in what order?
I hate to admit it, but I am a little confused on this point myself. At first, my master gave the strongest impression that Buddha nature in a string was defined by starting in one of the five legal starting positions. And then developing the string according to the allowed rules. But then later, he said something about somebody or others theorem. I never got it straight. Maybe I even misheard what he said. But whatever he said, it puts some doubt in my mind as to whether this method hits all strings with Buddha nature. To the best of my knowledge, at least it does. But Buddha nature is a pretty elusive thing, you know.
I gathered as much from Joshu's M U. I wonder, what is it?
I was just wondering about those two Koans. I mean, the Cohen and its un-Cohen. The ones which say, the this mind is Buddha and this mind is not Buddha. What do they look like when turned into strings via the geometric code? I'd be glad to show you. He writes down the phonetic transcriptions and then pulls from his pocket a couple of pieces of string. Which he carefully folds inch by inch, following the triplets of symbols written in the strange alphabet. Then he places the finished strings side by side. You see, here is the difference.
They are very similar indeed. Why, I do believe there is only one difference between them. It's that one of them has a little knot on its end.
By Joshu, you're right.
Uh huh. Now I understand why your master is suspicious.
You do? According to your rule of thumb, at most, one of such a pair can have Buddha nature. So you know right away that one of the Koans must be phony. But that doesn't tell which one is phony. I've worked and so has my master. At trying to produce these two strings by following the string manipulation rules, but to no avail. Neither one ever turns up. It's quite frustrating. Sometimes you begin to wonder.
You mean to wonder if either one has Buddha nature? Perhaps neither of them has Buddha nature, and neither Cohen is genuine.
I never carried my thoughts as far as that, but you're right. It's possible, I guess. But I think you should not ask so many questions about Buddha nature. The Zen master Mumon always warned his pupils of the danger of too many questions.
Alright, no more questions. Instead, I have a sort of hankering to make a string myself. It would be amusing to see if what I come up with is well-formed or not.
That could be interesting. Here's a piece of string. He passes one to the tortoise. now you realize that I don't have the slightest idea what to do we'll just have to take potluck with my awkward production which will follow no rules and will probably wind up being completely undecipherable grasps the loop between his feet and with a few simple manipulations creates a complex string which he proffers wordlessly to Achilles at that moment Achilles face lights up
jeepers creepers I'll have to try out your method myself I have never seen a string like this I hope it is well-formed
I see it's got a knot at one end
oh just a moment may I have it back I want to do one thing to it
why certainly here you are hands it back to the tortoise who ties another knot at the same end then the tortoise gives a sharp tug and suddenly both knots disappear
what happened I wanted to get rid of that knot
but instead of untying it you tied another one and then both disappeared where did they go tombolia of course that's the law of double nodulation suddenly the two knots reappear from out of nowhere that is to say tombolia
amazing they must lie in a fairly accessible layer of tombolia if they can pop into it and out of it so easily or is all of tombolia equally inaccessible
I couldn't say however it does occur to me that burning the string would make it quite improbable for the knots to come back in such a case in such a case you could think of them as being trapped on in a deeper layer of tombolia perhaps there are layers and layers of tombolia but that's neither here nor there
what I would like to know is how many is how my string sounds if you turn it back into phonetic symbols
as he hands it back once again the knots pop into oblivion I always feel so guilty about violating the central dogma takes out his pen and code book and carefully jots down the mini symbol trip uh the mini symbol triplets which correspond to the curvy involutions of the tortoise's string and when he is finished he clears his voice are you ready to hear what you have wrought
I'm willing if you're willing alright it goes like this
a certain monk had a habit of pestering the grand tortue the only one who had ever reached the enlightenment yawn enlightenment by asking whether various objects had Buddha nature or not to such questions tortue invariably sat silent the monk had already asked about a bean a lake and a moonlit night one day he brought to tortue a piece of string and asked the same question in reply the grand tortue grasped the loop between his feet and
between his feet how odd why should you find that odd well uh you've got a point there but please go on alright
the grand tortue grasped the loop between his feet and with a few simple manipulations created a complex string which he proffered wordlessly to the monk at that moment the monk was enlightened I'd rather be twice enlightened personally then it tells then it tells how to make the grand tortue string if you begin with the string draped over your feet I'll skip those boring details it concludes this way from then on the monk did not bother tortue instead he made string after string by tortue's method and he passed the method on to his own disciples who passed it on to others or passed it on to theirs
quite a yarn it's hard to believe it was really hidden inside my string
yet it was astonishingly you seem to have created a well-formed string right off the bat
but what did the grand tortue string look like that's the main point of this Cohen I suppose
I doubt it one shouldn't attach to small details like that inside of Cohen's it's the spirit of the whole Cohen that counts not little parts of it say do you know what I just realized I think crazy though it sounds that you may have hit upon that long last Cohen which describes the very origin of this art of Zen strings
oh that would be al- that would almost be too good to have a to have Buddha nature
but that means that the great master the one the only one who ever reached the mystical state of the enlightenment yawn enlightenment was named tortue not tutor what a droll name
I don't agree I think it's a handsome name I still want to know how tortue string looked can you possibly recreate it from the description given in the Cohen
I could try of course I'll have to use my feet too since it's described in terms of foot motions that's pretty unusual but I think I can manage it let me give it a go he picks up the Cohen and a piece of string and for a few minutes twists and bends the string in arcane ways until he has finished the product
well here it is odd how familiar it looks
yes isn't that so I wonder where I saw it before
I know why this is your string Mister T or is it
certainly not
of course not it's the string which you first handed to me before you took it back to tie an extra knot in it
oh yes indeed it is fancy that I wonder what that implies
it's strange to say the least
do you suppose my Cohen is genuine
wait just a moment
or that my string has Buddha nature something about your string is beginning to trouble me m- Mister tortoise tortoise looking most pleased with himself and paying no attention to Achilles and what about tortue's string does it have Buddha nature
there are a host of questions to ask
I would be scared to ask such questions Mister T there is something mighty funny going on here and I'm not sure I like it
I'm sorry to hear it I can't imagine what's troubling you
well the best way I know to explain it is to quote the words of another old Zen master Kyogen Kyogen said Zen is like a man hanging in a tree by his teeth over a precipice his hands grasped the branch or hi- his hands grasp no branch his face his feet rest on no limb and under the tree another person asks him why did Bohadharma come to China from India if the man in the tree does not answer he fails and if he does answer he falls and loses his life now what should he do that's clear he should give up Zen and take up molecular biology chapter nine Muman and girl what is Zen I'm not sure I know what Zen is in a way I think I understand it very well but in a way I also think I can never understand it at all ever since my freshman English teacher in college read Joshi's MU out loud to our class I've struggled with Zen aspects of life and probably I will never cease doing so to me Zen is intellectual quicksand anarchy darkness meaninglessness chaos it is tantalizing and infuriating and yet it is humorous refreshing enticing Zen has its own special kind of meaning brightness and clarity I hope that in this chapter I can get some of this cluster of reactions across to you and then strange though it may seem that will lead us directly to curdalian ma- matters one of the basic tenants of Zen Buddhism is that there is no way to characterize what Zen is no matter what verbal space you try to enclose Zen in it resists and spills over it might seem then that all efforts to explain Zen are complete complete waste of time but that is not the attitude of Zen masters and students for instance Zen Cohen's are essential part of Zen study verbal though they are Cohen's are supposed to be triggers which though they do not contain enough information in themselves to impart enlighten enlightenment may possibly be sufficient to unlock the mechanisms inside one's mind that lead to enlightenment but in general the Zen attitude is that words and truth are incompatible or at least that no words can capture truth Zen master Muman possibly in order to point this out in an extreme way the monk Muman no gate in the thirteenth century compiled forty-eight Cohen's following each with a mo- commentary and a small poem this work is called the gateless gate or the Muman Khan no gate barrier it is interesting to note that the lives of Muman and Fibonacci coincided almost exactly Muman living from eleven eighty-three to twelve sixty in China Fibonacci from eleven eighty to twelve fifty in Italy to those who would look to the Muman Khan in hopes in hopes of making sense of or understanding the Cohen's the Muman Khan may come off as a rude shock for the comments and poems are entirely as opaque as the Cohen's which they are supposed to clarify take this for example Cohen Hogan of Zario monastery was about to lecture before dinner when he noticed that the bamboo screen lowered for meditation had not been rolled up he pointed to it two monks arose wordlessly from the audience and rolled it up Hogan observing the physical moment said the state of the first monk is good not of the not that of the second Muman's commentary I want to ask you which of those two monks gained and which lost if any of you has one eye he will see the failure on the teacher's part however I am not discussing gain and loss Muman's poem when the sky is rolled up the great sky opens or when the screen is rolled up the great sky opens yet the sky is not attuned to Zen it is best to forget the great sky and to retire from every wind or then again there is this one Cohen Gosu said when a buffalo goes out of his enclosure to the edge of the abyss his horns and his head and his hooves all pass through but why can't the tail also pass Muman's commentary if anyone can open one eye at this point and say a word of Zen he is qualified to repay the four gratifications and not only that he can save all sentient beings under him but if he cannot say such a word of Zen he should turn back to his tail Muman's poem if the buffalo runs he will fall into the trench if he returns he will be butchered that little tell is a very strange thing I think you will have to admit that Muman does not exactly clear everything up one might say that the meta-language in which Muman writes is not very different from the object language the language of the Cohen according to some Muman's comments are intentionally idiotic perhaps meant to show how useless it is to spend one's time in chattering about Zen however Muman's comments can be taken on more than one level for instance consider this Cohen a monk named Nance or a monk asked Nansen is there a teaching no master ever taught before Nansen said yes there is what is it asked the monk Nansen replied it is not mind it is not Buddha it is not things Muman's commentary old Nansen gave away his treasure words he must have been greatly upset Muman's poem Nansen was too kind and lost his treasure truly words have no power even though the mountain becomes the sea words cannot open another's mind in this poem Muman seems to be saying something very central to Zen and not making idiotic statements curiously however the poem is self-referential and thus it is a comment not only on Nansen's words but also on its own ineffectiveness this type of paradox is quite characteristic of Zen it is an attempt to break the mind of logic you see this paradoxical quality in the Cohen as well concerning Muman's commentary do you think that Nansen was really so sure of his answer or did the correctness of his ma- answer matter at all or does correctness play any role in Zen what is the difference between correctness and truth or is there any what if Nansen had said no there is not any such teaching would it have made any difference would his remark have been immortalized in a Cohen here is another Cohen which aims to break the mind of logic the student Doko came to a Zen master and said I am seeking the truth in what state of mind should I train myself so as so as to find it said the master there is no mind so you cannot put it in any state there is no truth so you cannot train yourself for it if there is no mind to train and no truth to find why do you have these monks gather before you every day to study Zen and train themselves for this study but I haven't an inch of room here said the master so how could the monks gather I have no tongue so how could I call them together to teach them oh how can you lie like this asked Doko but if I have no tongue to talk to others how can I lie to you asked the master then Doko said sadly I cannot follow you I cannot understand you I cannot understand myself said the master if any Cohen deserves serves to be serves to bewilder this one does and most likely causing bewilderment is its precise purpose for when one is in a bewildered state one's mind does begin to operate non-logically to some extent only by stepping outside of logic so the theory goes can one make the leap to enlightenment but what is so bad about logic why does it prevent the leap to enlightenment Zen struggle against rules dual dualism to answer that one needs to understand something about what enlightenment is perhaps the most concise summary of enlightenment would be transcending dualism now what is dualism dualism is the conceptual division of the world into categories it is possible to transcend this is it possible to transcend this very natural tendency by prex- prefixing the word division by the word cons- conceptual I may have made it seem that this is an intellectual or conscious effort and perhaps thereby given the impression that dualism could be overcome simply by suppressing thought as if to suppress thinking actually were simple but the breaking of the world into categories takes place far below the upper strata of thought in fact dualism is just as much a perceptual division of the world into categories as it is a conceptual division in other words human perception is by nature a dualistic phenomenon which makes the quest for enlightenment an uphill struggle to say the least at the core of dualism according to Zen are words just plain words the use of words is inherently dualistic since each word represents quite obviously a conceptual category therefore a major part of Zen is the fight against reliance on words to combat the use of words one of the best devices is the Cohen where words are so deeply abused that one's mind is practically left reeling if one takes the Cohen's seriously therefore it is perhaps wrong to say that the enemy of enlightenment is logic rather it is dualistic verbal thinking in fact it is even more basic than that it is perception as soon as you perceive an object you draw a line between it and the rest of the world you divide the world artificially into parts and you thereby miss the way here is a Cohen which demonstrates the struggle against words Cohen Shuzan held out his short staff and said if you call this a short staff you oppose its reality if you do not call it a short staff you ignore the fact now what do you wish to call this Muman's commentary if you call this a short staff you oppose its reality if you do not call it a short staff you ignore the fact it cannot be expressed with words and it cannot be expressed without words now say quickly what it is Muman's poem holding out the short staff he gave an order of life or death positive and negative interwoven even Buddhas and patriarchs cannot escape this attack patriarchs refers to six venerated founders of Zen Buddhism of whom Bodhidharma is the first and Eno is the sixth why is calling it a short staff opposing its reality probably because such a categorization gives the appearance of capturing reality whereas the surface has not even been scratched by such a statement it could be compared to saying five is a prime number there is so much more an infinity of facts that has been omitted on the other hand not to call it a staff is indeed to ignore that particular fact minuscule as it may be thus words lead to some truth some falsehood perhaps as well but certainly not to all truth relying on words to lead you to the truth is like relying on an incomplete formal system to lead you to the truth a formal system will give you some truths but as we shall soon see a formal system no matter how powerful cannot lead to all truths the dilemma of mathematicians is what else is there to rely on but formal systems and the dilemma of Zen people is what else is there to rely on but words Muman states the dile- the dilemma very clearly it cannot be expressed with words and it cannot be expressed without words here is Nansen once again Josu asked the teacher Nansen what is the true way Nansen answered everyday way is the true way Josu asked can I study it Nansen answered the more you study the further from the way Josu asked if I don't study how can I know it Nansen answered the way does not belong to things seen nor to things unseen it does not belong to things known nor to things unknown do not seek it study it or name it to find yourself on it open yourself wide as the sky this curious statement seems to abound with paradox it is a little reminiscent of this surefire cure for This curious statement seems to abound with paradox, it is a little reminiscent of this surefire cure for hiccups. Run around the house three times without thinking of the word wolf. Zen is a philosophy which seems to have embraced the notion that the road to ultimate truth, like the only surefire cure for hiccups, may bristle with paradoxes. Ism, the unmode and unmon. If words are bad and thinking is bad, what is good? Of course, to ask this is already horribly dualistic. But we are making no pretense of being faithful to Zen in discussing Zen. So we can try to answer the question seriously. I have a name for what Zen strives for, ism. Ism is an anti-philosophy, a way of being without thinking. The masters of ism are rocks, trees, clams. But, but it is the fate of higher animal species to have to strive for ism, without ever being able to attain it fully. Still, one is occasionally granted glimpses of ism, perhaps the following koan offers such a glimpse. Hyakujo wished to send a monk to open a new monastery. He told his pupils that whoever answered a question most ably would be appointed. Placing a water vase on the ground, he asked, who can say what this is without calling its name? The chief monk said, no one can call it a wooden shoe. Isan said, Isan, the cooking monk, tipped over the vase with his foot and went out. Hyakujo smiled and said, the chief monk loses. And Isan became the master of the new monastery. To suppress perception, to suppress logical verbal dualistic thinking, this is the essence of Zen. The essence of ism. This is the unmode, not intelligent, not mechanical, just un. Joshu was in the unmode. And that is why his MU unasks the question. The unmode came naturally to Zen master Anman. One day, Anman said to his disciples, this staff of mine has transformed itself into a dragon and has swallowed up the universe. Oh, where are the rivers and mountains and the great earth? Zen is holism carried to its logical extreme. If holism carry- claims that things can only be understood as wholes, not as sums of their parts, Zen goes one further, in maintaining that the world cannot be broken into parts at all. To divide the world into parts is to be deluded and to misenlightenment. A master asked, was asked the question, what is the way, by a curious monk? It is right before your eyes, said the master. Why do I not see it for myself? Because you are thinking for yours, of yourself. What about you, do you see it? So long as you see double, saying, I don't and you do, and so on, your eyes are clouded, said the master. When there is neither I nor you, can one see it? When there is neither I nor you, who is the one that wants to see it? Apparently, the master wants to get across the idea that an enlightened state is one where the borderlines between the self and the rest of the universe are dissolved. This would truly be the end of dualism. For as he says, there is no system left which has any desire for perception. But what is that state if not death? How can a live human being dissolve the borderlines between himself and the outside world? Zen and Tumbolia. The Zen monk Basui wrote a letter to one of his disciples who was about to die, and in it, he said, your end which is endless is as a snowflake dissolving in the pure air. The snowflake, which once was very much, was, which was once very much a discernible subsystem of the universe, now dissolves into the larger system which once held it. Though it is no longer present in the distinct subsystem, its essence is still somehow present, and will remain so. It floats in Tumbolia, along with hiccups that are not being hiccuped, and characters and stories that are not being read. That is how I understood that, and that is how I understand Basui's message. Zen recognizes its own limitations, just as mathematicians have learned to recognize the limitations of the axiomatic method, as a method for attaining truth. This does not mean that Zen has an answer to what lies beyond Zen, any more than mathematicians have a clear understanding of the forms of valid reasoning, which lie outside of formalization. One of the clearest Zen statements about the borderlines of Zen is given in the following strange koan, very much in the spirit of Nansen. Tozan said to his monks, you monks should know that there is an even higher understanding in Buddhism. A monk stepped forward and asked, what is the higher Buddhism? Tozan answered, it is not Buddha. There is always further to go. Enlightenment is not the end all of Zen. And there is no recipe which tells how to transcend Zen. The only thing one can rely on for sure, is that Buddha is not the way. Zen is a system and cannot be its own meta-system. There is always something outside of Zen, which cannot be fully understood or described within Zen. Esker and Zen. In questioning perception and posing a ra- absurd answerless riddles, Zen has company, in the person of MC Esker. Consider Day and Night, figure forty-nine. A masterpiece of positive and negative interwoven, in the words of Mumon. One might ask, are those really birds, or are they really fields? Is it really night or day? Yet, we all know there is no point to such questions, the picture, like a Zen koan, is trying to break the mind of logic. Esker also delights in setting up contradictory pictures, such as Another World, figure forty-eight. Pictures that play with reality and unreality, the same way as Zen plays with reality and unreality. Should one take Esker seriously? Should one take Zen seriously? There is a delicate haiku-like study of reflections in Dewdrop, figure forty-seven. And then there are two tranquil images of the moon reflected in still waters, puddle, figure fifty-one, and rippled surface, figure fifty-two. The reflected moon is a theme which recurs in various koans, here is an example. Chiono studied Zen for many years under Buko of Angaku, still she could not attain the fruits of meditation. At last, one moonlit night, she was carrying water in an old wooden pill girded with bamboo. The bamboo broke, and the bottom fell out of the pill. At that moment, she was set free. Chiono said, no more water in the pill, no more moon in the water. Three Worlds, an Esker picture, figure forty-six, and the subject of a Zen koan. A monk asked Gonto, when the three worlds threaten me, what shall I do? Gonto answered, sit down. I do not understand, said the monk. Gonto said, pick up the mountain and bring it to me, then I will tell you. Hemiolia and Esker. In Verbum, figure one hundred forty-nine, oppositions are made into unities on several levels. Going around, we see gradual transitions from black birds to white birds, to black fish to white fish, to black frogs to white frogs to black birds, after six steps, back where we started. Is this a reconciliation of the dichotomy of black and white? Or of the trichotomy of birds, fish and frogs? Or is it a six-fold unity made from the opposition of the evenness of two and the oddness of three? In music, six notes of equal time value create a rhythmic ambiguity. Are they two groups of three or three groups of two? This ambiguity has a name, Hemiolia. Shopan was a master of Hemioli, uh, and see his Waltz, operatic forty-two, I think that's what that means, right? Or his Etude Operatic twenty-five, number two. In Bach, there is a, there is the Tempo du Menüetto from the keyboard partita number five, or the incredible finale of the first sonata for unaccompanied violin in G minor. As one glides inward toward the center of Verbum, the distinctions gradually blur, so that in the end, that there remains not three, not two, but one single essence, Verbum, which glows with brilliancy, perhaps a symbol of enlightenment. Ironically, Verbum not only is a word, but means word. Not onl- not exactly the most compatible notion with Zen. On the other hand, Verbum is the only word in the picture. And Zen master Tozan once said, the complete tri- Pitica can be expressed in one character. Tripitica, meaning three baskets, refers to the complete texts of the original Buddhist writings. What kind of decoding mechanism, I wonder, would it take to suck the three baskets out of one character? Perhaps one with two hemispheres. Finally, consider, uh, Indra's net, finally consider three spheres to, figure fifty-three. In which every part of the world seems to contain, and be contained in, every other part. The writing table reflects the spheres on top of it. The spheres reflect each other, as well as the writing table, the drawing of them, and the artist drawing it. The endless connections which all things have to each other is only hinted at here. Yet the hint is enough. The Buddhist allegory of Indra's net tells of an endless net of threads throughout the universe. The horizontal threads running through space, the vertical ones through time. At every crossing of threads is an individual, and every individual is a crystal bead. The great light of absolute being illuminates and penetrates every crystal bead. Moreover, every crystal bead reflects not only the light from every other crystal in the net, but also every reflection of every reflection throughout the universe. To my mind, this brings forth an image of renormalized particles. In every electron, there are virtual photons, positrons, neutrinos, muons. In every photon, there are virtual electrons, protons, neutrons, pions. And every pion, there are. But then another images, uh, but then another image arises. That of people, each one reflected in the minds of many others. Who in turn are mirrored and yet others, and so on. Both of these images could be represented in a concise elegant way, by using augmented transition networks. In the case of particles, there would be one network for each category of particle. In the case of people, one for each person. Each one would contain su- calls to many others. Thus creating a virtual cloud of ATN around, of ATNs around each ATN. Calling one would create calls on others, and this process might cascade arbitrarily far, until it bottomed out. Mumon on MU. Let us conclude this brief excursion into Zen by returning to Mumon. Here in his comment on Joshu's MU, MU. To realize Zen, one has to pass through the barrier of the patriarchs. Enlightenment always comes after the road of thinking is blocked. If you do not pass the barrier of the patriarchs, or if your thinking road is not blocked, whatever you think, whatever you do, is like a tangling ghost. You may ask, what is a barrier of a patriarch? This one word, MU, is it? This is the barrier of Zen, if you pass through it, you will see Joshu's. Uh, you will see Joshu face to face. Then you can work hand in hand with the whole line of patriarchs, is this not a pleasant thing to do? If you want to pass this barrier, you must work through every bone in your body, through every pore of your skin. Filled with this question, what is MU, and carry it day and night. Do not believe it is the common negative symbol meaning nothing. It is not nothingness, the opposite of ex- of existence. If you really want to pass this barrier, you should feel like drinking a hot iron ba- ball that you can neither swallow nor spit out. Then your previous lesser knowledge disappears, as a fruit ripening in season. Your subjectivity and objectivity naturally become one. It is like a dumb man who has had a dream, he knows about it, but he cannot tell it. When he enters this condition, his ego shell is crushed, and he can shake. Okay, I think I need to stop, cause it's starting really bad.